I am going to move back and let Superintendent Burrows take that picture with James.
You want to get in the picture too as well?
And while they are taking some of those pictures, we had about eight students participate and get some certificates for tonight, but some of them have gone off to college. But we also wanted to congratulate Jenny Chen, Divine Usimbor, Godwin Babao, and Nicholas Blackson. So they all participated with Christiana Care as well. I also wanted to provide some recognition for some of our students who went through scrum training. And if you're not familiar with that, I'll give you all an opportunity to let Google be your friend. But in the technology space, scrum is how we tend to move projects along. And CodeDifferently was able to provide an opportunity to a few of our students to get some scrum master training. So I wanted to bring up Leila White for completing that scrum master training. Leila is actually, I think I just made your certificate come out, Leila, I'm sorry about that. Leila is actually a rising ninth, well now a ninth grader, but was the youngest to go through our scrum master training. And she will be on her way to get some scrum master certification. But we did have two additional students, Simone Cooper and Alex Eldridge. And these young ladies are from Middletown High School. They actually completed that scrum training and they completed their scrum certification. So for those in the technology space, watch out because these ladies are coming for your jobs. And as they finish taking some of those pictures, again, we just want to thank Middletown High School, the Apple Quinomic School Board for allowing us to, Apple Quinomic School District for allowing us to come in, and Odessa for partnering with us and getting an opportunity for Leila as well. We have had an amazing partnership. Newcastle County has allowed our students to get paid for learning how to code. And we look forward to an amazing rest of our school year and next summer.
Thank you very much and congratulations. Moving on in the agenda, we don't have any delegations, so we'll be skipping that portion this evening. Moving on to the report section, we have the superintendent's report, Dr. Burrows.
All right, welcome everybody. I want to start off with saying that on September 20th was National IT Professionals Day. This month is National Principals Month, National Physical Therapy Month. And October 3rd was National Custodian Day. Gremlins in the system. We've currently filled 511 positions at this point. Tonight, you're going to see a presentation on unit, on our unit growth. Remember, as a school system, September 30th is very important to us. That's how we're funded on our September 30th student count. This past year, we have grown 338 students from the previous September 30th count. That takes us up to 12,804 students. We grew, that calculation takes us up, we grew almost 51 staff units since last year. We do do, and I've talked about this the last several months, on class size waivers, that vote does not happen until November. Currently, if we had to take the vote tonight, we would be asking for two class size waivers. We do have 15 classrooms that are at 22, and you know, we'll continue to grow as the, as the year goes on. We're hopeful it's just not in those 15 classrooms, so we can keep it at two class waivers. I want to make some comments. I know the community had some concerns in regards to the communication piece on the incident that happened on Bunker Hill Road outside of Appo Quinomic High School. I just, I understand the frustration and the amount of information that was shared. But please be cognizant of that this happened off school property. And since it happened off school property, we can only communicate with what the police communicate with us and what the police give us as facts at this point. Now, I know there's a lot of rumors and things that were said and could have happened, even on the night of the event. When it happened, I myself had three different stories on what happened, what could have happened, what may have happened. And so we have to report factual information. We can't go on social media and report what we think is correct or incorrect. We have to report what the police allows us to report. And as I started off saying, I would love to share more detail and more information, but it could impact the police investigation, which is an ongoing investigation, and have been, and can only share what the police share with us. So please stay with us as we get information. The police will report that information and give us clearance to report the information. I want to talk about the football guidelines that were put out. As I mentioned in my letter to the community, we have a very proud history of Friday Night Lights in our community and are very thankful for the support that our community gives to all of our young men and women who participate in athletics, in particular in this instance, in our football athletics. We have seen an increase of incidents happening at games. We've seen that not only in our district, we've seen it across the state, and we have seen it across the nation. Just this past weekend, if you looked at the news at all, you've seen several games that were canceled, several programs that have canceled games for the season. And unfortunately, we saw incidents of shootings at football games. We ourselves have seen an increase in fights and things like that at our football games over the last few years. We want to create a safe environment for our kids to come and enjoy games. The unfortunate part of that Friday night is that there was a 17-year-old, an innocent bystander that had to be airlifted to the hospital that night. We no longer can say that, you know, we hope something doesn't happen, we wish that something doesn't happen, even though not associated with the game, didn't happen at the game. But we have seen an increase of incidents happening, so that's what brought forth our regulations for attendance that we brought in. Now, we're continuing to look at those regulations, we'll continue to monitor them. They're the strictest that they are as of right now. We're currently looking for a resource for ticketing that can help us and aid us in this situation. We're asking our community to be patient and understanding as we go through this. We are just trying to do what's best for kids and to keep spectators and the participants safe at our events. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on in the agenda, the next agenda item is the September 30th Unit Care Report, Dr. Spore. Hello.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here for the annual report following the September 30th count, which, as Dr. Burrows mentioned, is an extremely important process as it serves as the basis for almost all of the funding that we receive in the district each year. So when you hear the September 30th count process or you hear the unit count process, those two terms are synonymous. They refer to the official student enrollment count for each school and for the district as a whole each year. With that, it drives, each of our enrollment drives our units, which is our level of staffing that we earn in the district to be able to have teachers, paraprofessionals, and the like. Students are, when you look at students and you look at the units that each student generates, it's based on three different classifications. First, the student's grade level. Second, whether or not he or she has a special education classification. And third, enrollment in secondary vocational courses. So those three factors are the three primary drivers that determine the amount of units that the district generates based on enrollment. So the next several slides, we'll run through all of the data. As you can see, we have our numbers for 2022 compared to 2021. And as a reminder, our 2022 figures are preliminary and are subject to audit and state confirmation, which typically comes in the November-December timeframe. So as Dr. Burrows mentioned in his report, we were up to, or we are up to 967 units this year, which is a change of almost, a growth of almost 51 units over last year. In the next several slides, we'll look at it by grade band, starting with our early childhood centers. You can see the enrollment of each early childhood center. Overall, we grew by 29 students, which was a growth rate of 2.8%. Moving on to elementary, again, same data sources here. And at the elementary level, we grew by 219 students, 4.74%. Middle school, a growth not quite as high as our elementary, but looking at a growth of 89 students and almost 3%. And high schools had the lowest amount of growth. We grew by just one student, what the chances of that would be in a statistical calculation, I would love to see. But we grew by just one student there at the high school level. And you can see how both AHS and MHS have flattened out a little bit as OHS's enrollment has grown over the last couple of years and will continue to do so as we add one more grade next year.
Well, that's impacted because we graduated in larger class sizes.
And so as you look at this year compared to the last three years, you can see our growth over time. Last year was a very large growth year, but that was in part driven by the fact that in the preceding year, we had a small growth year. So this year, with a growth of 338 students, that is just below our average if we look at the last five or six years, but still a healthy growth rate of about 2.7%, which puts us and keeps us probably at about the third largest district in the state. We'll wait for those final confirmation numbers to come out a little bit later on. This is a little small to see on the screen. Board members, you have this in your packets, so maybe you can see there a little bit. But this is just interesting to see. We started adding this to the presentation last year to give everyone a sense of really just how the district has grown from 2006 onward. If you're asking why 2006, that's as far back as the unit count plus system that we use. That's as far back as the data goes. Certainly, we could get data further back, but this is just the easiest. And you can really see how we've grown from just 10 schools now up to 20, and from about 7,700 students up to just shy of 13,000 students. So next year, pretty safe to say, we'll cross that 13,000 student benchmark, which will be, which will be an interesting point. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank so many people across the district. Accounting for all of these students throughout the month of September is a huge process. Our core team is comprised of Julie Lauterball, Beth Cireo, Mag Sliphart. Our core team is comprised of Julie Lauterball, Beth Siriow, Mag Sliphart, Heather Delgado, and Ed Gerdo. We, they work tirelessly every single day with the school secretaries throughout the month of September. And even before that, the unit count process really is known as September, known as a September process, but it starts all the way back in June. And those folks put in a ton of time. They're very diligent in making sure that we have all the documentation we need to make sure we're set up for an audit should one come. As we go about just accounting for all 13,000 students every single day throughout the month of September to make sure that we're all set up and ready to go to submit our information to DOE, which is due this Thursday. So I'd just like to thank everyone involved across the district. It's a huge, huge process. Any questions from the board?
Thank you very much. The next report we have is a transportation update. Mr. Pullman.
Good evening. Stacy, I thought I said take the night off. Cut her loose, Steve. She's, she's out.
Thank you for joining us, Ms. McIntosh.
So Stacy, we did ask, I did ask her to stay home tonight. She's putting in an inordinate amount of time. She's in when most of us are rolling over in the morning and here after many of us leave, and that's the truth. And, and I thought she deserved the night off. So I do want to say thank you for all your work before I get started, Stacy.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. So current numbers, as I've done every month, 21 buses are on the road, 11 anticipated this month. We checked today, probably middle to the end of the month is when we expect them to arrive here. Some reports are they've arrived in the state, but we're waiting for them here, middle to end of the month. What will those 11 anticipated buses do? Replace some of the older buses that we acquired, some of the first buses that we acquired, some of the loaner buses that we were always going to return and to fill needs. Some of the routes that are too long right now, where maybe our numbers are tight, that's what we'll take a look at. We currently have 25 drivers that are Apo Quimic School District employees. Seven are in training. In parentheses, that's what I reported last month. That's why I left the four there. So currently it's seven, and we have an ongoing posting for drivers, because people, you know, as we know from the reports last year, people leave for one reason or another, and we always want to make sure we have drivers to hop on the route, knowing the length of time that it takes for training. Next slide. Again, current situation, 87 buses are provided by our contractors. 10 drivers, they lost since the beginning of the school year. Currently, as we speak, Stacy is driving a route. The other ladies are not, but that may have even changed because of a resignation or something today. So that's on a day-by-day basis. But at the time I put this together, Stacy was the only one covering a route. Nine routes are being covered internally by the contractors. There are substitutes internally. Many of these buses have arrived late in the morning and afternoon. I do think we're doing a better job at this point of communicating when that is going to happen. But one area of concern is still we're subject to the ups and downs of our contractors. But like I said, 87 to give an idea, even though we're running 25 and that's been the focus, we still rely on those contractors for 87. The heaviest is advanced and for student transportation.
So I just wanted to ask a question. I mean, I remember transportation updates from last year and years gone by, where you would be showing us graphs of double runs and buses constantly every day having to arrive late. I'm not seeing those anymore. Is there a reason for that?
So there are, there are some buses that are arriving late, but nowhere near the magnitude that we experienced last year. Would be disingenuous if I said that there aren't buses that are late. But I think we have processes in place to minimize that at this point.
Well, right. My observation would be, you know, just given traffic and life, and there's always going to be buses late from time to time. But for those of you who don't remember some of these transportation updates in years gone by, I mean, we had planned in buses to be late, and we had planned in double runs and all that sort of stuff, which was very unfair to a lot of those kids. And that now seems to have been eliminated, correct?
Correct. Okay. Next, Steve, please. So overview after the first month, remember last, last meeting, I said overview after the first week. This is the overview after the first month. We currently have a job posting for a new specialist in the department. We had a resignation, so Stacy is operating one person short currently. Office staff has returned to the office, except for the supervisor, as I indicated in the last slide. Overall, the communication with our community is going in the right direction. Traffic flow in and out of campuses and schools has definitely improved. I thank many people for their help and advice on how to improve that. But I think we're in a decent place right now with traffic flow. One challenge that continues to be a challenge, transportation runs related to athletics. Only one contractor is currently doing athletics. And times of the athletic events sometimes are a challenge getting them to where they want to go. So I ask myself a question, why do we not use our buses to solve that? Well, our buses are being utilized for other purposes, activity runs. And again, we only have 25 of them. Stacy, what else are we using our buses for other than activity runs?
Oh, we are, we are heavily into athletics as well, but just, we just can't provide the service to all of our schools. You know, we do the very best we can, but we definitely do athletics all week long to the best of our ability as well.
So we believe that the beginning of the year, that there would be two contractors doing athletic runs, and that didn't pan out. Am I right about that?
Yeah, that's correct. I was hoping to bring on another one, but he just wasn't interested in growing at the time. Didn't want to add any additional work.
Next slide. There is one. Questions?
Thank you very much. Moving on in the agenda, the construction update. Mr. Hopkins.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for joining us.
All right, Kevin, we're throwing Steve off of this. All right, we'll start off, before that, we dropped off Meredith. Meredith, they're just doing punch list items at this point, cleaning things up. They've got the canopy in. Just finalizing the project as we go through. And at Middletown High, we're going to start the athletic field, the softball field. Probably start putting fencing, steel fencing up on Thursday as it dries out, and then trying to get it ready for sod by the 15th, middle of October. But you're going to see the change order for that here in the next few minutes. All right, let's go with the Crystal Run. You can see the main entrance, the Crystal Run's coming out. They're going to start the roadwork coming through there. This, this will loop back to the high school. They have the roof deck on all the way across. Go ahead, Kevin. On the back, the steel is now all erected. That crane is gone. The crane's out of there and all the steel's up. Good, Kevin. Front, the sheeting's coming all the way across. The metal studs are across the front. As I said, the decking is across. This is going to be the new equipment screens that are going in. They're not going with a managed roof here, but we're having the screens here, 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 and back in the back. Sheathing's wrapping up and coming around. After that, they're putting a blue skin on now, and we can start setting the windows, start tightening it up for weather. Okay. That's just scaffolding going up to the roof. They've got roof access until we can get the hatch in. This is coming across the back into D. As it comes out into here, this steel's all been erected now. More of the equipment screen decking, and this all gets covered with a kind of a metal material, so you can't see any of that. That's the stair tower on A. Coming up, that's all done. You're moving fast on me, Kevin. This, this is the stage, stage here in this area, and a percentage of them coming across. Go ahead, Kevin. Just more of the stair towers coming up there. The stair landing's poured at this point. Good, Kevin. Masonary walls are all getting laid out and started. This has all been erected with steel at this point. Now they'll take all those masonry walls up. Okay. More of area D, and as I said, this is all complete. That, that's the water pit going in. We have the water connected now, and we have permanent water on the site. Okay. Just more of the stormwater management stuff coming in. Pipe's going down. Back area, that's going out to D this way. Masonry's moving well. All the metal studs in area B are done. They've got it. They've got the drywall topped out on both sides. This ductwork is in now. So they're moving well through B coming into A. This is area A. It's all laid out. They're starting the framing here, and the metal studs are coming up around the front with the sheeting. Okay. This has all been poured at this point. This is area C, the last side of the classroom, closest 896. That's all done and complete. They're starting to lay out the walls. Psychedelic. That's all we have.
Thank you. I have a question about the softball field at Middletown High School. I know that there was a group of seniors last year who worked with landmark engineering. It was part of their senior project. Are they just being kept in the loop about them?
I think Ted, Ted had them in the loop, and Ted had talked about it. So I don't know if he's went back to them with it, but we had talked about bringing them in and keeping them in. For that and the parking lot, we were trying to do a parking lot too, depending upon funding.
I just think it's a cool learning opportunity, so I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, we've, we've had them in it for most of the way.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. Moving on to board comments, and I'll start all the way down that way with Ms. Wright.
Hello, everybody. Since we got out here so late, and in the interest of time, I'm just going to pass for this month. Maybe I'll have some more comments next month.
Mr. Witt.
Hello. I would like to say September was, was, there were a lot of events that I attended, open meet the teacher night. Things so forth and so on were fabulous. I do want to call out the HBCU event at Middletown High School on 9/28. It was very well attended, and I want to congratulate all the students who received scholarships to the, to their next journey in college. Also, I want to just let the community know that on October 15th, there will be a community wellness fair at Middletown High School between 11 and 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Abrams. Mr. Forston.
I will pass. Thank you.
Moving on to myself, my only board comments, well, one is tomorrow morning, I'll have bagels with the board members. So if you're interested in joining me, I'll be at Manhattan Bagel at 8:30 to talk about issues related to the school district. As Lil is not here to remind you, I will remind you, the school board is a volunteer role, so your bagel's on your own dime, but the pleasure of my company is free. But sometimes it's Thursdays, but this month it's tomorrow because of scheduling. And then also, just real quick, I just wanted, public service reminder, the board is a volunteer role. Sometimes when there's things in the community that people assume about the board, you're not always making the right assumption. I serve on this board as one of five people who are ultimately always trying to do what's best for kids. And sometimes I feel like that's not what people think, and so I'm just here to dispel that rumor that in my almost eight years of service as a board member, I have not met anyone who's trying to do the wrong thing. We're not spending all of this volunteer time or even people's paid time trying to make a wrong decision. We are doing what's best and what we think with the information that we have at the time, what's best for kids. So that's my little, welcome to my TED Talk. Moving on in the agenda, we're going to talk about old business. Policy series 7,000 Public Relations. Ms. Miles will not be joining us, so Dr. Burrows will be giving her presentation. Welcome, sir.
7,000's been in front of you. At this point, we've had no comments, so I'm asking for approval of the changes to policy 7,000.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve policy series 7,000 on public relations as the final reading as presented.
There's a second? I have a motion by Mr. Abrams and second by Ms. Wright to approve the, I didn't mean that, policy series 7,000 on public relations as presented. Are there any questions, concerns on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, we have the September 13th, 2022 Board of Education Minutes for approval.
Madam President, I'll make a motion that we approve the December, or September 13th, 2022 Board of Education Meeting Minutes as presented.
Madam President, I second the vote.
So there's a motion to approve the September 13th, 2022 Board of Education Meetings as presented by Mr. Forston and second by Mr. Witt. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next agenda item is the monthly financial report for approval. Mr. Loftus.
So the Financial Advisory Committee met on September 28th to review the August revenue and expenditure report, and they recommended approval at that time.
Madam President, I'll make a motion that we approve the monthly financial report as presented and as recommended by the Financial Advisory Committee.
I'll second.
There's a motion to approve the monthly financial report as already approved by the Financial Advisory Committee. The motion was made by Mr. Forston, second by Mr. Abrams. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments on this motion? Hearing none. Those in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the Internal Accounts Report for Approval.
I'm sorry.
Financial Advisory Committee also reviewed the August Internal Account Report and recommended approval of that report.
Madam President, I'll make a motion that we approve the Internal Accounts Report as presented and as recommended by the Financial Advisory Committee. And as always, the board thanks the Financial Advisory Committee for all its hard work. They don't get half the recognition.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Mr. Forston and the second by Mr. Abrams to approve the Internal Accounts Report that has also been recommended for approval by the Financial Advisory Committee, who we appreciate their efforts. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments on this motion? Hearing none. Those in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a security staffing recommendation. Mr. Pullman.
All right. So you'll remember, I reported last month on our first meeting of the Safety and Security Task Force after we reconvened the committee that was initially established in 2019 and made the initial recommendation for our current constable slash SRO implementation in the district. So I'm back tonight with a recommendation from that task force. Steve, please. So just as a reminder, the purpose of why the committee meets is to identify and recommend those school safety practices best suited for implementation in Apo Quimic schools. The task force shall deliver a report of its activities and recommendations to the Apo Quimic School District Board of Education. That's why I'm here tonight. Next slide, please. The guiding question of our committee, do we want to make changes to the original plan with a new recommendation to the school board? And the answer to that is yes. As a reminder, our initial plan that we implemented, we called Plan B, or the geographical plan, where we had someone at each school or on every campus. And as I reported last month, we implemented a four-year plan in three years, and now we are back again based on a recommendation with, we're back with a new recommendation based on what the task force determined. Next slide. So the current status of our recommendations, just to put some numbers, four schools have a school resource officer, SRO as they're referred to, state troopers. Nine schools were campuses with a district. Nine schools were campuses with a district constable per the plan. And there is one district lead constable who happens to be in the back row tonight. So the four-year funding plan has been accomplished, as I said, in three years. And that is the number that was allotted in the 2019 referendum for the current plan that we have implemented. As I had mentioned last month, we did add two additional. And that is the cost for the two additional that we have added since the beginning of the school year. Next slide, please. The recommendation costs to add as, as the, the committee has recommended, constables with what we call OECs benefits, OEC standing for other employee costs. Costs the district 56,000, almost $57,000 plus the equipment that a constable needs. So for each constable, it costs $62,390. We are recommending eight additional. And we currently have funds that were allotted by the state in a state safety and security fund that total 763,344. We do thank our local legislators for that, Senator Stephanie Hansen and Representative Kevin Hensley, who worked closely with the district, who are on the task force and who fought hard for our district and all school districts to get that money, and we thank them. And just as a note, when I, I put up there, the constable costs, an SRO, a state trooper, cost us $95,506.30. And again, that's with OECs, meaning benefits as part of the cost. So to implement, to fully implement the plan, and that includes what we already implemented, plus what we're recommending, we would be looking at $1.5 million in the next referendum if the state, state safety grant would not exist at that time, if it would go away. Grants, I think, as we all know, sometimes they're here today and then they're gone tomorrow. And you have to figure out a way to sustain it. I know our legislators, because they told me, will continue to fight for it. So we hope that that money sticks around, but that number is on the screen just in case we have to figure it out locally here. Next slide. Questions?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve the security staffing recommendations as we discussed in executive session.
A second.
Or the plan, the plan as presented.
The plan that's presented now.
The plan as presented.
So there's a motion by Mr. Abrams to approve the plan as presented and a second by Ms. Wright. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments? Those in favor of the plan vote by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed vote by saying no.
No.
Dr. Burrows, will you pull the board?
Yes, Mrs. Wright.
Yes.
Mrs. Witt.
Yes.
Mr. Abrams. Mr. Forston. No. Mrs. Paul.
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you, Mr. Pullman. The next agenda item is a plethora of overnight field trips for approval. Yes, there you go.
There's a lot of trips here and I'm going to make, rather than go through each trip individually, I'd like to make a motion that we approve them all. I've looked at the information and I think they're all great trips. I wish I had gone on trips like this. So I make a motion that the board approve overnight trips number 8840 Appaquinate High School to the National FFA Convention. Trip number 8843 Middletown High School to the National FFA Convention. Trip number 8845 Middletown High School Cheerleaders to the IMG Football Game. Trip number 8848 Appaquinate High School to the FF, FFA Convention. That's in a, similar to the earlier trip. The trip 8849. Also a trip to the FFA Convention for Appaquinate High School. Trip 8851 Appaquinate High School. The inner, it's the International Club Annual STEM Trip to Great Britain to study your British history. Trip number 8910 EPSI Pro Start Competition in Dover. Trip number 8936 Middletown High School Governors Challenge Boys Basketball in Salisbury. Trip number 8964 Odessa High School to the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis. And trip number 8850 Appaquinate High School Travel Club to Portugal and Spain in July of 2023.
Sorry, that one easy. There's a motion by Mr. Forston, a second by Mr. Abrams to approve all of these trips as presented. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments on the motion? I'll just say I have a comment as parent of a child traveling to National FFA Convention. Good luck to all of those kids going and competing on behalf of our school district from all of our high schools and our middle schools. It's a tremendous accomplishment to represent your, our district nationally. All those in favor vote by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next agenda item, change orders for approval. Mr. Hopkins.
All right. The first one we just talked about was the softball field. That'll make this comply with Title IX for this, we're going to Silver Lake. We have some counter flashings for 18,000 that we're trying to stop some leaks. We also installed some drainage out there to try to stop the weather coming in the backside of the building, 17,000. For Meredith, one of the bigger ones you'll see is like 51,000, where we're trying to change up how we're connecting up our, our remote learning TVs, make it consistent with the rest of the district.
Thank you.
These have all been reviewed and are recommended for approval by me.
Make a motion that we approve the change orders as presented and as recommended.
Second.
I do have one question, just despite these change orders, we're still under budget for all projects.
We are.
I have a motion by Mr. Forston, a second by Mr. Abrams. Are there any additional questions, comments, or concerns on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor vote by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the next part of the agenda, the personnel report. Dr. Spoor.
The October Personnel Report has been submitted for your review. Tonight, we're asking for approval of the report as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Abrams, a second by Mr. Forston to approve the Personnel Report as presented. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on this motion? All those in favor vote by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next part of the agenda is establishment of upcoming meeting dates. There will be a board workshop here Tuesday, October 25th at 6 o'clock. The topic is strategic plan data. The public is invited to attend. The next regular board meeting for the school board will be Tuesday, November 1st in this room at 7 o'clock. I'd like to make a special note that this date is off of our normal schedule, which is normally the second Tuesday of the month because that is election day. I think that's all we have. We continue to serve the public in this role. And if you have questions or need to reach out to us, we all look forward to hearing from you. Thank you so much and have a great night.